We'll call to order tonight's committee of the whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for December the 2nd, 2025. The city council should have the minutes from the November 8th, 18th, excuse me, committee of the whole. Any additions or corrections of those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Any questions on tonight's agenda for the city managers? Anyone from the council have a question for the city manager?
I have a question. It's not related to the agenda. It's something for the council to consider.
That'd be fine.
I usually ask the city manager to provide me with specific place in the budget where various things are located, and she's been very good about that. In fact, she copied everybody on the response today. And so I suggest that that be added to the agenda item summary going forward. So when something says it's in the budget, go ahead and reference where it is in the budget. I'm going to ask for it anyway, so there's really no additional work required on the part of the city managers to add that sentence to the bottom of each agenda item summary. And I have discussed this with some of the council already, and those that I discussed it with all thought that, you know, additional information certainly couldn't hurt. So there's no objections to it from anybody that I talked to. So I'd like the council to consider asking the city manager to add that to the bottom of each agenda item summary for budgeted items.
Just a couple of things, just to make sure we set the table for future discussion potentially, is that Ms. Crouch, as far as I know, Mr. Griswold is the only council member that is asking for this specific information, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And everything that he is asking for is in the budget book that we all have?
It is. The only difference is capital projects are specifically outlined along with capital outlay, and there's a number of contractual items tonight that fall within bigger categories in departmental budgets.
Okay. And the budget was approved by every member of this dais?
No, it was not.
That's right. Yeah. Eight of the nine approved the budget.
Correct.
That's great. So, you know, I am aware, because I'm copied on these emails, that Megan and her staff, and I'm not sure who's doing it, is providing this information for Mr. Griswold almost at every meeting. There's some request of this type. And she showed everybody on the council what she's been doing. I think this one was probably a little more involved than the normal answers. So this is time on their part to provide this information for the council, and I think the council just needs to decide, is this important to all of us, to have the staff provide this for us? Some meetings, we've got 10 or 12 items that, you know, are in the budget, and some we have two or three. I mean, it does vary from time to time. But I've not discussed this with any of y'all, I don't think specifically. We've certainly not discussed it as a council. But, you know, we don't have to make a decision on that tonight, but if there is some, somebody has a comment or a question they'd like to ask while we have some time right now, that'd be fine, too.
Just to correct that, I have discussed it with you.
Yes. Well, I apologize for that, Kelly. You're exactly right. I just haven't had direct discussions with the rest of this.
Right. Nor have I. I've had some, but not all. You are correct.
I am correct.
And I'm going to continue to ask for this information, so it's no additional work for anybody. If we can say yes, it's in the budget, we ought to be able to easily point out where it's in the budget.
I asked you guys an email today for direction on this, because theoretically, I try to be extremely responsive to every council member. When things are taking staff time, theoretically, I need the majority of you to tell me whether or not I should be providing this information. And I try, out of common courtesy to all of you, to not say it's going to take five of you to instruct me, but it does take a significant amount of time to look up all of these when it's something that is in the budget. That's why I gave you a guide to that. So I'm happy to oblige at whatever the majority of the council would like done, but theoretically, asking every meeting for it anyway, despite what's being said from the dais. A year ago, you took this up and opted not to pursue it. So I have not been providing this information with agenda item summaries, because the council and the majority said they did not want this information, or to discuss it further. So now, this is the first agenda where I received a request for 100% of the items that are budgeted for that. I've not received that request before. I really do try, out of common courtesy, to be respectful to all council members and provide that information. But if it's expected going forward for every budgeted item on the agenda, I would like some direction from the majority of the council.
So this was an unexpected conversation. We don't have to continue it, but does anybody have anything they'd like to add or say to this?
Well, I mean, we did have this conversation, and per the email we received today, it happened on August 20th of 2024, and we opted not to proceed. So I don't know why we need to revisit it. But also, we all, everyone on this dais has the information in front of us, whether it's online or in a physical book that we all received another copy of in our packet this past weekend. And we are all adults and should be able to do our own homework of finding things where they belong. And if it's something that is completely amiss and you can't find it, then you can maybe go and ask. But the city manager does not need to spend her time in minutia things, answering questions that we are capable of going and finding the answers ourselves. I think that's a ridiculous use of her time and effort when she should be thinking about other things and moving forward on other directions within the city. That's just my personal opinion on that.
I'm going to have some questions on this, but I don't think this is the proper time to air those, my questions. So I'd like to have the time to formulate some questions about this, and why, and wherefore, and send them to you in written form, and see if we can get them answered before I make a judgment, one way or the other, on this.
So now I'll make sure I understand what you're saying. When you say this, explain to me what you're saying, please.
Okay. Well, if the question is asked, is it in the budget, and the answer is provided yes, then obviously, somebody knew enough to say that it was in there. So I would like to pursue that further as to how that person would know that. But I didn't want to air this whole discussion. I'd rather write this down and send it in.
Sure thing. Theoretically, it's before you, because it's in the budget. If it's not in the budget, we tell you it was not budgeted. And so everything has to get through me to get to you. And so we're checking, yes, so that you're very clear it's in the budget. That runs through five staff members who are consummate professionals, who are very transparent with the city council if it's in the budget or not. You have an item tonight that is not budgeted. A property purchase. It was very clear that it was not budgeted. It was explained. Obviously, you may have more questions about that, but that is, that's why I just need, and it'd be great to have some information from all of you about what you'd like to see. And again, happy to oblige. This is, what does the council need? What information do they need? And we'll be happy to provide that. The challenge that I have is technically, all nine of you, the mayor is my liaison, but technically, I work for all nine of you. And so when things are taking a lot of my time, I need direction from the majority of you as to whether or not that's something you want to proceed with. Very rarely would we invoke that, and don't like to invoke it. It is, because we dealt with this over a year ago, and I got direction, I need to know if that is the direction you still want to go if you want to change that.
Anyone else have anything? So in the next couple of weeks, I'll have an individual conversation with everybody on the council, and we'll come back on the 16th and 17th.
Let me say this. I don't have a problem with it. I can look it up. I don't have a problem doing that. But if one city council person wants it, I'm not going to stand up and say he shouldn't be allowed to get it. So that's kind of where I'm at on it. I think he has a right to ask for it. He's a city councilman, and whether I agree with it or not, I think it's his right to ask for that. But I personally don't need it myself. But if he needs it, I guess we need to, it may take up a lot of time, but I guess we need to try to make it happen.
Well, as we've seen in previous council meetings, when I've asked this information, some of it is deeply embedded in a broad category of something or else, something or other. And the fact that we do have this budget book, and I know that Councilwoman Witten will come back and rebut anything I have to say, but it would be very beneficial to me to be able to take the two books side by side, the packet book and the budget book, and quickly find out just where it is in the budget. So if you don't want to do it, that's fine. I'll just continue to ask individually for...
Kelly, this is how I've been able to work through that, is I work with, is I will take our budget, and I will plug it into, take the PDF version of it, and put it into an AI tool. And then I'll take our e-packet and plug that into an AI, into the same AI tool. And then I'll simply, I'll ask the question for every item on there to identify where it is in the budget. And it's, I feel that it's pretty remarkable how accurate that, accurate and thorough, like, that process can be. And it's not always 100% accurate, but it'll usually get you pretty close. And it takes, it takes me a minute, maybe a minute and a half to do it. And for the most part, I'm able to get most of, if I have a concern or a question, I can pull it up like that and look at it. I would be more than happy to, like, sit down with you and show you how I do mine. And, you know, that might work for you, or if that's helpful.
Well, thank you for that offer. If it just takes a minute, I don't think the staff's going to be spending hours and hours and hours on it either. So, thank you.
Megan, if I may, Mayor, don't you notify us if there's not a budgeted item?
Yes, sir, I do. And that's where we will tell you, I mean, it's a check and balance also for us, which is, most agenda items, the mayor actually asked me this this week, like, how much goes into that? The amount of scrutiny and the department heads will start nodding at you, is eight to 10 people review every agenda item. On the budget side alone, it's usually five people. And if that box is checked, we have checked it and checked it. And we want to make sure we're giving you the best information possible, for sure.
It would be kind of foolish of you to try to slip something in there that's not been budgeted.
I believe I'd be gainfully unemployed, and rightfully so.
Okay. We'll just move ahead. Any other, and I'll talk to everybody over the next couple of weeks, and we'll come back and try to...
And you did ask me to query other council members, which I have done, and then bring it up at the committee of the whole.
Sure.
So to say, you know, you weren't aware of it, or anybody else wasn't aware of it, is not correct. So, drive on.
What I was saying is I've not had my own individual conversations with them.
It's Christmas time, folks. Let's move on.
All right. Any other questions for the city manager tonight? Any other questions? Okay. City manager, anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. It is past 6 o'clock, so we'll go ahead and move into the regular agenda. Welcome, everybody, to the Auburn City Council meeting for December 2nd, 2025. Welcome those that are with us tonight, as well as those that are listening on WA&I, as well as watching through our streaming services. Lindsay with the roll call.
Adams.
Here.
Hoblins.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This is the first meeting of the month, so we'll recognize our outstanding employees, as well as our other employees with their service awards.
We're proud to introduce you to our December Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here from Cynthia Ledbetter, the Library Director for the City of Auburn. Valerie Temple began her service to the Auburn community in 2014 as a Youth Services Library Assistant, and was later promoted to Engagement and Outreach Library Assistant. Over the past 11 years, Valerie has consistently demonstrated exceptional dedication and has significantly contributed to the success of our outreach activities and library programs. Valerie has been instrumental in coordinating with Auburn City Schools to facilitate our outreach initiatives, including the third grade Reading Dragons program, where staff visited every third grade classroom in Auburn City Schools each month, and Lit Wits, a book club offered at Drake Middle School, East Sanford School, and Auburn Junior High School. Her dedication to these programs is helping foster a love of reading and learning in the community. In addition to her impressive organizational skills, Valerie embodies the city of Auburn's core values. She approaches her responsibilities with reliability, enthusiasm, and attention to detail, as well as a collaborative spirit, always going above and beyond to ensure the success of our programs and outreach. In 2021, Valerie is instrumental in recruiting, organizing, and mentoring the first Auburn Public Library Teen Advisory Board. Over the last year, Valerie again served as a teen advisory board mentor, helping teens develop leadership skills while fostering a collaborative environment for serving the community. Among many appreciation notes addressed to her, one family says about Ms. Valerie, "Thank you for loving us so much and teaching us so many wonderful things. You're an angel to us." Her unwavering commitment to delivering excellent service to our community, her exceptional work ethic, her willingness to serve in any role make her a deserving candidate for this recognition. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
as our other outstanding employees, and to my old teammate from Auburn High School, Calvin Ramsey, all the best for you as you retire. During the committee of the whole, we had a very rich discussion regarding information that we would potentially ask the staff to provide related to budgeted items. We will take that up, hopefully, maybe in two weeks, and I will be talking to each of the council members about that. Under Mayor's announcements, I just want to say thank you to our public safety, particularly our police. At the Auburn Opelika game a couple of weeks ago, it was probably the largest crowd that's ever been in that stadium, and it was well organized. Our police, it was obvious that there'd been a plan that had been put in place for many, many days. I thought the game was, unfortunately, went to the other team, but I thought it was well played and was well handled by our public safety. And so, Will, if you would make sure that you would send my thank you to that. It was a great night in a big crowd, and I was proud to be from Auburn that night. It was well handled. As well as this past weekend, with it being Thanksgiving and the Iron Bowl, thank you again to our police, our public safety, everybody that's involved in helping our city go through those big game weekends. Obviously, we know how important that is economically to our community, but people wouldn't feel comfortable being here unless they felt protected and felt like things were organized, and we had a plan to get them in and out of town. I know there's no way to get 100,000 people out of here at the same time at night, but I just appreciate the hard, hard work that goes into each and every football weekend, as well as each and every football season. So thank you again to our police officers and our public safety team. Y'all did a great job. I want to say thank you to Auburn University for allowing me to participate in their tree lighting services past Sunday, and including our community in that. Certainly, congratulations to Auburn's new football coach, Coach Alex Golish. We welcome him to town and look forward to working with him, and all the best to him as he brings his family to Auburn. This weekend, there's a lot of Christmas activities going on in and around the town, especially downtown, so please be aware of that, including the parade on Sunday. And certainly, everybody just needs to be mindful of that as they're trying to get around this weekend. All right. Any other announcements or comments? Anyone else? Okay. All right. We'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications.
Hello.
Hello.
I hope you guys had a great Thanksgiving break. And so, just as you said, big news for Auburn football. We just hired our new head coach, who is former USF head coach, and we're hoping for a good season next year. And then, last Friday, Riley Green came to Neville Arena and put on an amazing concert. And then, in the fall next year, Zach Bryan is coming to Jordan Harris, so we're all super excited about that. And then, SGA hosted its annual Creed Day on November 19th, which is a celebration that highlights the origins of the Auburn Creed and exemplifies its representative values. And then, Thursday, we're having Auburn Ring Night, 5 to 8 p.m. And then, on November 11th, Pi Sigma Alpha Political Honor Society partnered with Career Services and the College of Liberal Arts to host its Networking Navigation Event. The event helped students learn tips and tricks they can have to prepare for job hunting. And then, November 21st, Auburn's men basketball team defeated number 14 St. John's, 85 to 74, and it was a great game. And Downtown just got its new Cookie Fix store, and it's a big hit with the students and with really good cookies. And then, lastly, finals, finals are next week for our students, and then we're off for winter break. Thank you. That's all for me, and War Eagle.
War Eagle. Good luck on finals. Okay. All right. We'll move ahead to city managers' communications.
Hold on just a minute. Mayor, did you, yeah, I have no communications on agenda items.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I didn't know if you were going to do, we have citizens' communications on agenda items.
Thank you for catching me on that. So, sorry about that. So, item number six, citizens' communications on agenda items. If you'd like to speak to the council about anything on our agenda, now would be the time for you to come forward and do that. You have five minutes to speak to the council. Please give your name and address for the record. If you'd like to speak on item 9A, please wait until that point in time, because there's a public hearing attached to that. Yes, sir?
Tom Haley, 1695 East University Drive. I just have a couple of questions, and probably not going to get the answer tonight. But as I read through some of the packet today, there were some things I discovered that I'd never heard of. But I'd just like to know what an unobligated accumulated fund is. Obviously, there's a lot of money in it. Y'all will decide how it's spent, but I do remember a month ago, the moratorium discussions we had and the problems we have downtown. I'm just hoping maybe some of this money could look at some of the immediate problems we have down there, from three 6-inch undersized sewer lines and a storm drain, that maybe we could prioritize using some of this money for that. The next thing, I guess, might be interesting to know is how much money is in that fund. We're spending millions tonight. We got a problem downtown that y'all all know about, and I just wanted to point that out. The unobligated accumulated fund is new to me, but it would be nice to know the total amount of money that's sitting in there that's unobligated. Thank you.
Yes, sir. My guess is that'll come up in the discussion a little bit later. Anyone else like to speak about an item that's on tonight's agenda? Okay. Now, we'll move to city managers' communication.
All right. Under city managers' communications this evening, we have the announcement of three vacancies on the Board of Zoning Adjustment for terms that begin January 21st and then January 20th, 2029. The appointments will be made at the January 6th meeting. Just for your information, all current appointees of the Board that their spots are up for reappointment are eligible, should they choose to apply.
All right, go ahead with the consent agenda, please.
Our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Anyone?
I do.
Yes, sir, Sunny?
Yes, sir. I would like to pull item 8 Charlie 3 and item 8 Delta 2.
Anyone else? All right, 8C 3.
Item 8C 3 authorizes a professional services agreement with Road Management Technologies LLC for a comprehensive roadway infrastructure condition assessment in the annual amount of $74,448. The agreement includes the option for two one-year extensions.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Sunny?
Thank you. At first glance, paying $74,000 to have somebody tell us what roads to pave in our town, it just sounded funny. So, after reading this, though, I realized there's a lot to this agreement, and I wondered if we could have someone speak to the benefit that the city receives from the approval of these services.
Right, I'll have our interim city engineer speak to it. I think what's important is some of you, from a constituent standpoint, probably get more questions about resurfacing than and why certain streets are or not. And one of the things that we do, it's not, you don't just eyeball the street and say, hmm, it doesn't look good and it needs resurfacing. There's a lot more that goes into that and a lot of analysis. We're going to use this to build a five-year pavement plan and then use, if we do future years with this, it'll inform us on an annual basis about things that have changed. There's in Councilman Griswold's Ward, Owen Street declined in a hurry, and some unexpected things happened there where that was outside of pavement analysis, and that wasn't eyeballed, plus go out and check. So, there's things that are dynamic in that, but I'll have Brandy go over generally what this contract is doing and the why.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, council. So, yes, this, we've been doing pavement assessments for many, many years. Originally, as Megan suggested, we did do them through a very qualitative analysis and an inspection that we did, and that took a lot of time by each of our inspectors. With our last five-year resurfacing, we also contracted with a different company, and they do this now with new modern technologies where they're using radars and sonars and things like that as cars drive to then read the surfaces of the roads that then can be used to determine what condition those roads are in compared to each other. And then, we use that data to determine the conditions and which one should be resurfaced. We then take that data a step further and determine what kind of volumes are on that road, and then we can determine which roads would have faster deterioration to the point that she mentioned. Some roads deteriorate faster. Obviously, that's our major streets and those that have heavy traffic. So, the advantage of this contract and this technology is they will be putting equipment on some of our vehicles, like our trash trucks and things like that, that are already driving every street every day to do a qualitative analysis, and that can be continually updated. And we can go in there and use this software at any time to reassess the condition of our streets and reassess that five-year plan and if we need to make any changes.
And after a while, our city staff is going to start putting the sensors on the vehicles? Is that...
So, this company will come in and put the equipment on the vehicles, and we've been working with them to make sure that the vehicles are capable of receiving the equipment and that we can get the data off of it through Wi-Fi technologies.
Okay. All right, well, that, it's not a thing I've heard of before. I appreciate the explanation on that, and I'm sure a lot of our citizens appreciate it as well. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts?
So, if...
Go ahead, Con.
So, once they do the assessment, and I guess they put their equipment on the vehicles and stuff, how often would they have to come back and do an assessment?
It's a continual assessment because the vehicles stay equipped, and so, as the vehicles drive, it is constantly assessing and going into the computer algorithms.
Is that continuation? Is that part of this cost, or every time, we're paying something different for it?
No, so this first year, the $75,000 covers the first year of continual assessment, but we can renew it for up to a total of three years.
And what we would do is, you know, we want to make sure we're getting the data and so on that we wish to be getting and that it is functional. We have switched companies. We were not fully satisfied. A lot of you were contacted by the previous vendor with the data that we received, and not saying they did a bad job, it just is not exactly what we needed. And so, we're trying this. This is a concerted effort between both Public Works and Engineering Services. Public Works maintains all the roads, and this doesn't substitute when I get a phone call from one of you that we're not going to go out. We'll send a vehicle out to drive over it, but we also send engineers and our other technical experts out in the field to look at problems when we have them. You know, we had some trouble on Longleaf lately that we were aware of, and it deteriorated quickly, and we had to make another patch. Those things are going to happen, but this is a way to inform us best to make a five-year plan. We try every budget cycle to give you resurfacing information, but that is dynamic. Something like Owens Road had to bump up faster, and it's not that it's taking things away from other things. That was a road that was failing and failing fast and had to be fixed, and so that's going to happen periodically.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, Kevin.
You said that we did this in the past. Who, you said we, who is we? Is that another contractor or is that...
City staff.
The city?
Yeah.
Well, we had a contractor between city staff and...
Yes, ten or so years ago, you know, we had our inspectors go out, and they had to go to every single street, multiple locations, and do those assessments. With our last five years ago, we made the change to go to consultants because of the time it was taking our staff to do the work and the financial investment that we had in it.
And the data that we get from this contractor, this service, is that raw data, or have they massaged it to say, this is where you need to go?
The raw data is in the computer system, but it does get massaged into an easy-to-see view of what needs to be done. And basically, they get a numeric scale of condition, and then we can set parameters to, for instance, if it drops as sometime in the future, it drops to a lower threshold than we are comfortable with, then we can get an alert, and we would know that Owens Road or Longleaf sections of that had dropped below what we find to be acceptable, and we would know to prioritize that.
The three-year extension, they're going to provide the data, but we have the sensors, and they're sending, those sensors are sending data to where?
Every day. They're essentially housed, the data is housed on the cloud in a computer program.
So, it's something that the city has access to?
Yes, yes.
Is there a reason that we can't evaluate that data rather than pay somebody 75K each and every year to do it?
It's built into the software, is that correct?
It is. It's built into the software.
75K is really for the software package and the sensors.
Yes.
And we're really just leasing the sensors.
Yes.
Or leasing the sensors. And you said they would remain on the vehicles, though?
For the duration of the contract.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. How much would it cost the city to buy these sensors ourselves and evaluate the data, do you think?
Well, we couldn't without the software.
Okay, so this software is proprietary to this company?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay, and the motion carries. All right.
Item 8D 2 accepts a public greenway easement for property located at 825 Lee Road 96.
May I have approval?
Second. Have a motion and second. Mr. Moore?
My original question was, what is a greenway easement? But I think I understand that. Now, my next question is, will the city have use of this public greenway created by this action if we approve it tonight?
It's a great question. So, that is the eventual goal. That is not something that will be immediately realized by accepting this tonight. This is just dedicating that area, I guess designated on a plat, that this would then be a part of the city's easements, that eventually, when we decide to, when we have the, I guess, enough of this stretch connected and is in, has been dedicated, then it'll be on a list, it'll get constructed, and then it'll be open to access. But right now, when you guys see these subdivision plats come in and these greenway easements are dedicated, it is really just an accumulation of these greenway easements until we get enough of a stretch to then prioritize them to construct that greenway, and then eventually it'll be open to public access. So, this is kind of the first part in a very long thought-out process of eventually constructing these easements or these greenways.
And we've been collecting these for years per the subdivision regulations.
Good?
Good.
Okay, any other questions? All right, have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
I move.
Second. Have a motion and second. Any further questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Ordinances.
Item 9A authorizes various zoning ordinance text amendments that generally include an amendment to definitions and use regulations for solar energy systems in Section 203, Section 511.07(c), amendment to standards for non-residential uses in rural zoning districts in Article 4, Table 4.3, establishment of residential use regulations for the NC 40 zoning district, Table 5.2, which has previously been left out of the zoning ordinance, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this at its October 19th meeting, 19th, sorry, 9th. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
Why don't you just the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent?
Second. Have a motion and second. Is anyone in the council have a problem before the vote on this this evening? Okay, seeing a hearing done, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak.
My name's David Hamilton. I live at 2261 Longwood Drive. Max is my council member. I'd like to discuss the ordinance regarding the solar aspects of the ordinance. I think, as I review it and look at it, I see it's very incomplete. It doesn't cover a lot of the aspects of solar that exist, and it's very restrictive in terms of ground-based solar, especially with regard to the size and availability of solar for ground-based systems and the fact that non-residential systems are not allowed. I have, I think, I asked a question to the council. Do you think solar is going to become important to Auburn in the future in terms of providing power? Who thinks so?
I don't know.
Don't know? Well, let me give you some information that might tell you how things are going. The localized cost of energy from rooftop solar, which is the cost you get to pay for your energy, is at a point now where it's crossing over the cost of utility energy prices. So, which of those is going up and which of those is going to go down in the future? In terms of new capacity for energy provided to the United States, over 50% of new electrical capacity is solar. We are entering the solar future, and we need to be aware of that as a city. I have some suggestions on improvements to the ordinance, and I started looking at ways to drive that. And I was looking through Comp 2030, and one of the statements in there says, "Planning should integrate substantially into every decision." And we have a decision here, so we should be considering sustainability. Now, with regard to the ordinance, it reads, this ordinance shall establish, no, excuse me. I think the ordinance should be rewritten to say, "The purpose of the ordinance is to establish clear and consistent regulation for the installation and operation of solar energy systems and battery energy storage systems. Battery energy storage systems are an accessory to a solar system which provide the backup in case your solar panels are not getting power like during the night." And we would, the benefit of that is to protect public health, safety, and welfare through compliance with the fire and electrical codes, ensure orderly development and protect neighborhood character and property values, promote the development of clean renewable energy resources throughout the city, and establish clear standards for decommissioning and site restoration of large solar facilities. See, the scope did not include large solar facilities. It did not include a lot of different things. And one of the things it did not include is what's called integrated solar energy systems or building integrated photovoltaics. And those are things such as solar materials that are incorporated directly and used in place of conventional building components such as solar shingles, roof tiles, and building facades or skylights. So, it looks just like a regular house, except it's got solar power. And today, as the ordinance reads, you wouldn't be able to install that on the front side of your house. And then, another use, which is sort of a little out there but coming, is something that's dear to Auburn's heart, which would be agrivoltaic systems, which is where you take a farm and mix solar energy generation with farming, and it includes the photovoltaic panels in a manner where it is complementary to the farming that's being done. Now, Auburn's going to have that explored, and then local farmers might want to explore that as well. Well, it's a ground-based, non-residential application. It's not going to be permitted. There's some changes I'd like to make to the actual ordinance itself. One is with regard to allowances for the solar panels. On rooftop solar panels, as I mentioned, the built-in materials, the built-in photovoltaic materials should be allowed on the front side of houses. I think that's pretty obvious. And I would like, oops, I have a timeout.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Damn it.
But we appreciate it.
But I think it would benefit the city to revisit this and set up a group that could extend this.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you. Who'll be next? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Questions from the council?
Yes, I'd like to have the planning director address these, if you would please, through the city manager.
Hold on just a minute. So, one of the things, and I'll have Justice give you more background, this, these regulations were added because people were going to inspection services trying to get permits, and we weren't really speaking to it in the zoning ordinance. We have an economic development team along with myself that has tremendous background in looking at solar energy systems, and one of our challenges is we have a lot of cloud cover in Auburn that makes it harder. There are solar farms, there's all kinds of things. Justice is going to distinguish that this is like the first shot across the bow. Most HOAs do not allow aspects of solar energy, and I'm not saying whether the city agrees with that, and we do not regulate that, but we're challenged by that for some of our subdivisions, and we're also running into, for those who are not protected by covenants, who get frustrated, we're also looking at a way to start somewhere to say, here's some basic regulations to help people. We have not had a drumbeat of, hey, let's, we have heard from Mr. Hamilton, but of, let's go broader with these regulations. So, I'll have Justice talk about where he's coming from and why we move these forward.
Thanks for the introduction there. So, with this, that's a really good summary of it. I mean, we really haven't had a lot of people clamoring for this. I think honestly, when talking to codes about this, just kind of collaborating across departments of how we need to approach this, building officials said there's less than a dozen of these on residential homes just kind of in town. There really aren't that many. We really don't get the complexity of the different systems. I mean, you go different places out west, like in Flagstaff, I mean, entire parking lots on public buildings, private buildings, have structures with solar over them. I mean, they're on larger buildings, like universities. We have some users in the industrial parks that have them, but I also asked about it from an accessory use standpoint, but in reality, like I said, we just don't have the nuances or that many applications in town where it really required the complexity on our end. We were really just establishing something for, to cut down just kind of on people complaining from, well, we do, this isn't regulated, what do I do? I don't have any answers, really. This is just establishing really just a baseline for the few people who do have it, and then also kind of making a pathway for the people who want to add them as accessory structures on industrial buildings, and then kind of for the non-residential uses and kind of speaking to them locating in industrial areas. Those uses are available to people who do not annex to the city, for a lot of those people who are primarily agricultural uses already. But for, I guess, kind of rural America and kind of where I used to work, it was a really big hot topic of you would have big landowners, 300-some acre-plus guys converting their entire farm to solar panels, and that did not sit well with a lot of the surrounding property owners and communities. And so, that was one of the things where we talked about where that would have to be something that would be a conditional use and would be treated as an industrial and confined to an industrial zone. an industrial zoning district. So that was the reason for taking that out. A lot of the other stipulations really just match, similar to windmill ordinances that we already have in town, available in side yards, available in the backyard, able to be put in different yards, just not on the front of the house. And so like I said, this is really just kind of the first attempt for us to just kind of satisfy the, I want to stress, handful of people in town from a residential use standpoint that do utilize these in their, on their own personal property.
But for non-residential uses, they are allowed outside the industrial zone. There's a whole provision for that.
Yeah, correct.
It's just not the pri, it can't be the primary use of the property like a solar farm.
Yeah, correct. And so I guess kind of from the primary use standpoint, when you guys, I know there's that exit, just kind of along 85 where it's an entire interstate exchange kind of looks like, I'm talking about, so what we don't want is someone buying a lot and then just kind of, I'm just going to do five acres of this, just kind of in the middle of town kind of deal. That can be an accessory use, not the primary use. And so that's, those are questions that we have had. I have been users in the industrial park that have reached out that have wanted to put industrial on their, have wanted to put solar panels on their property, and we have allowed that as an accessory use but not the primary use. So that's just the, that's the main distinction, the accessory use versus primary use.
Kelly, does that get your question answered?
Yes, sure.
Okay. Megan, Justice, could you talk about, how did the planning commission look at this? What were some of the discussion points that?
Yeah, so there was some questions, there were some questions about why the side yard? Why could it extend above the reach of the house? A lot of that has to do with people getting above the shadow line that their house would cast. So that's the reason. So some of these, I guess, oddly enough, like when I was in college, I used to install solar panels when I worked in Arizona. But some of these, they'll have them on ground mounted, they'll be on single poles, they'll be on pylons, and some of them need to extend above the house to catch sun if it's not going to be southern facing, or if it's not, or if it's facing a different direction and they have a hill or other property owners. So that's why there are a lot of questions in the planning commission just kind of around, well, how come it can't extend above the house since we don't allow flag poles to do that? About different side yards, what does this look like? And also kind of what the reasoning was, and what was the reason for some of the exemptions? And like we talked about, a lot of those exemptions had to do with the distinction between the primary use and the accessory use. But then also stressing that we have a handful of people in town. This is not drumbeat, this is not, a lot of people coming in asking this on a weekly or monthly basis. This is just occasional from codes asking, hey, we have someone asking again, what do we tell them? Or someone from economic development asking, hey, we have a specific company that needs to put up solar panels to meet their own company standards. How do we address this? And then us kind of giving them a pathway for that.
So we needed something on the books that says this is our, this is.
Correct, yeah. This is merely just getting something on the books just kind of related to solar.
But I would say is, time evolves. You know, if this is a bigger deal for our residential neighborhoods, our businesses, or whatever, we need to continue to evolve the ordinance. But we also need to make sure we're putting an ordinance in place that is addressing what everybody expects, and that's probably a greater conversation. If it becomes a high-volume situation, we're going to have to have a lot of discussions about it to make sure that we're allowing it and at the same time being sensitive to people who have to look at it. And that's why this is a starting point and very basic at this stage.
I have a question about, Mr. Hamilton brought up the type of product that's evolving residentially on roofs that, for the casual observer, may not even recognize the roofing as being a solar panel. I'm assuming based on what you're presenting here tonight that that type of accommodation is also, would also be addressed in the event that you're having code people come and showing you a particular product that is perhaps different to what our preconceptions are.
Yeah, certainly. So I guess we got a number of people that wanted to install solar roofs on their house. I imagine that'd be something that we talk about. Like I said, that is not an inquiry that we have gotten. And when I say roof solar, like you're talking about the roof shingles and like redoing their roof entirely with it, not just the roof mounted. We have some of those in town. Like I said, it's very sparingly, not something where it's common. And to your point, the roof solar shingles have not been installed or have not been requested of staff for us to review.
But in the event that they are, you would review them?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, thanks.
And inspection services is also, John's also verifying that they've not been asked about it from a building permitting standpoint.
Thank you.
But should they look like normal shingles? Would this ordinance prevent, prevent you from?
That's up to interpretation of the planning director, so.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that that would just be like an interpretation matter. But like I said, to that point, I mean, if we got, if we got a number of those and we want to talk about it, that wouldn't be, this isn't a hard stance by us. I think this is just.
The point is that you don't want large solar panels on the front of somebody's roof. That's sort of the.
Yeah, correct. Or somebody putting.
Trying to get at.
Yeah, or someone putting multiple pylon systems in their front yard or something of that nature. Like I guess this is more so trying to capture the street facing stuff, not limiting anybody. And I guess that's really the intent. The goal was really just kind of provide a pathway for people not to really limit people's solar options on their property. And I think that's also just kind of the flexibility of kind of the side yard and being able to extend past the apex of the house, things like that.
And as these other, as this other technology continues to develop, we'll have the opportunity to go back and massage these ordinances to meet our needs.
Yeah, we definitely can. Definitely can.
Kind of piggyback on a couple of those. The item that says the roof-mounted solar energy system shall not be placed on a roof pitched toward public street. Is that for aesthetics, or are we concerned about the structure?
No, that's just an aesthetics thing. Like I said, a lot of HOAs already prevent that. Like I said, this is just something that mirrors the windmill ordinance that we already have in town, or already in our ordinance. So that was why, like, we adopted that language. And we have the provisions for people to put them in side yards.
And again, I'll remind you that we're undertaking a full rewrite of the zoning ordinance also, and that's evolving over the next two years. And as things change, that can be written in. We also have a consulting team that's going to be talking about this, and if they see things that are missing, they'll certainly advise accordingly. But I think suffice it to say that as technology changes or demands from our businesses and residents, they want different things, and those are things we should talk about. And we are very open, including, this is just a starting point.
Other comments or questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Since this is the first reading of this, and we did waive everything so we could talk about it tonight, I would propose that we postpone this until 16 December and give Mr. Hamilton an opportunity. You're not going to be available between now and then?
I'm having some, a leave.
Okay, all right. Well, perhaps for the planning commissioner, planning commission and the planning director to consider some of the points that he brought up tonight.
We've had information from Mr. Hamilton for a period of time. He's emailed his concerns and had some dialogue with us already.
Okay. So that means you can't consider it over the next two weeks?
I'm saying we've had this information, and this is what we've brought forward is the ordinance tonight that's before you. If the council wants us to rewrite what's before you, I'm going to ask you then to divide the question because we have other items that we need moved forward tonight. So it's.
Yeah, there's three items on here. We haven't talked about two of those, right?
Yes, sir. And so however you guys want to do it, and if you want further discussion or you want the solar piece to be more involved, we can certainly do that. We, I would just ask that you divide it out eventually so that we can move forward with the other components.
I'm satisfied from my perspective in terms of the language on the piece regarding the solar. I feel very reassured that you are approaching this with all the readiness to accommodate whatever comes before us as a city. So I'm good, I'm good with it as it stands.
I would agree with you, Mr. Parsons. I've had correspondence with Mr. Hamilton on this. I've read through some of the information that he has sent. I think we're accomplishing some of the items in here, I think, with allowing it to be an accessory to, solar being an accessory to main power, I guess, is the right terminology there. I'm not sure. This is not something I know a whole lot about, to be honest, but I think this is a great introduction to talking about this further. And I think that seems like everybody's willing to continue conversations on this and developing this ordinance over time. But I think this definitely gives us a good starting point to start those conversations. Mr. Hamilton, I'm certainly willing to have more conversations with you about that as well as we move forward.
If we picked one aspect, say the roof tiles, in a more aesthetically pleasing solar collector, then would there be a waiver process that we could entertain such a thing?
Not at this time, meaning it has to be in the ordinance to be a waiver process. So it's up to his interpretation as the planning director.
Well, if it were approved, would there be a waiver process? No, is that what?
We have to outline waivers are everything because this is a law of the city. We have to outline whether or not there can be. You can appeal his interpretation of the board of zoning adjustment, whether or not it's allowed, but that's about it.
The process, as I understand it, just, let me just hypothetically, suddenly there's a rush on a product that is the latest thing on the solar world. Everybody wants to get in on a particular subdivision. They bring that to you. I presume some type of amendment would be brought to us.
Yeah, I imagine, because I think for some of that scale, kind of how that would go, right? Like if someone were coming in and they wanted to do this just kind of for purpose built, you know, they're going to put this on all their homes from a subdivision standpoint. I guess we probably worked that out in the pre-op, and I guess as they're working through just kind of the subdivision process and all that, that'd be an amendment that we can kind of figure out in the meantime. I think just kind of on the individual scale, on the micro level of just kind of each individual person asking, it probably wouldn't rise it. I think we'd find solutions for it. But like I said, should something like that happen, we would definitely move to be like, look, there's a critical mass for this, there's been a change, like, you know, we can do that. Like I said, I think we entertain, I think, we try to be responsive to the needs of people, to the needs of kind of businesses in town, and kind of try to be business friendly. I think amending this, I think just kind of shows that, that we're, like I said, just trying to give a pathway to people and for options on their property in different businesses and avenues for them.
Thank you.
And Sonny, on the waiver process, what I mean is if we don't explicitly say with this that a waiver could be granted under these conditions by the planning commission, we can't do it. And so, but Justice with his interpreting abilities, if it's gray and he thinks it meets the test of the ordinance, he's fine. Otherwise, we go the path that he and Bob just talked about. We go ahead and change it.
Well, I certainly appreciate our approach. I believe we're trying to get something on the books because we've had a few questions, and I think we all know this has the potential for coming in the future and growing, and we needed to start somewhere. At the same time, I want to tell Mr. Hamilton, thank you for the way you've gone about advocating for your, this interest, and you've wrote, written us very clear emails and very enthusiastic emails. And I appreciate you offering solutions and not just telling us where the problems are. And that was refreshing, so thank you for that. Your work is not in vain, so we appreciate you doing that. Oh, no, I can't let you respond. I apologize. You said it was your first meeting, right? It's all good. Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, on the table 52, lot area setback, the bulk regulations around NC-40, I had some commentary from constituents around that. I think I maybe have one of the only NC-40 neighborhoods in the city. So just can planning director speak to some of those, what we're doing here on those regulations?
Yeah, certainly. So this is one of the few zoning ordinances in town that have zero bulk regulations. So NC-40 technically only exists on a map. Someone came in and was looking at adding.
Justice, real quick, what's a bulk regulation? Sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. So bulk regulations have to do with the actual, the meat of the ordinance that, the metrics that define it. So NC-40, kind of like all the NCs, the number designates the thousand square, like 1,000 square feet, the minimum lot size. So NC-6 is a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, which is a little over a tenth of an acre. NC-40 is a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet, which is right, almost just under an acre. Acres, 43,000-ish, like I won't get too specifics. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So from there, there were no setbacks. There were no ISR, no impervious surface ratio, no floor area ratio. So essentially what this meant was that someone could come in, do a conventional subdivision, meet the, do a performance subdivision, which is a 50-foot lot minimum, and they could subdivide every last single one of these lots in this neighborhood with the exception of the ones in the, on the cul-de-sacs pretty much. Because a lot of these lots have like 200 free to furnish. And so when we discovered this, we looked back just kind of how we'd missed this. This has been in the zoning ordinance as a note to staff, from staff, to change this since 1996. We should just add these in, and it was never added in. So this is just kind of meeting the table. We went through just kind of from NC-39 and NC-48. Like Councilman said, this is the only NC-40 district in town, and that's how it's never come up. There are about 36 houses out there. And people normally, I guess, up until this point, I've gotten two inquiries about it over the last six weeks, but we're adding in setbacks from the rear minimum front and adding the ISR and the FAR, and also the minimum lot size and codifying that. Because right now, if someone were to submit a conventional admin plat, they could subdivide all of those lots, and there'd be no lot minimums that we would be able to enforce on them, on the books.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thoughts? The deletion of veterinary services from table 4-3, that's because it's already in 4-1.
Yes, sir. So it's the only one that had, it's had, yeah, it had a separate call out because vet offices are allowed in the rural zone, and I think it was just a placeholder to remind people, okay, this is the vet office standard you might be looking for. To clean it up, because it's the only one that's that way, we're just asking to remove it. It's still an allowable use. It has to comply with the commercial entertainment side of it in the table, just to clean up. But it's definitely not removing veterinary offices from a potential use.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Lindsay with the roll call?
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Foreman?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Cogleman?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Under resolutions, item 10A authorizes a tax abatement for IPEX USA Manufacturing Incorporated, located at 239 Technology Parkway, for the acquisition of new equipment. The company plans to invest approximately $2.95 million and anticipates hiring seven new employees.
May for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Anyone on the council have a question? Comment? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10B1 authorizes the purchase of two grapple lightning loaders with hard box body from Kenworth of Montgomery for the Environmental Services Department in the total amount of $562,304 or $281,152 each. This purchase was recently approved by the council at its November 4 city council meeting. However, we needed to revise the vendor to be Kenworth of Montgomery, so that's why it's back before you.
May for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? Yes, Sonny.
Yes, I should have asked this before, but are we just voting on the loaders tonight and not the trucks?
That's the whole, the whole thing, the pictures that are in your booklet of what they are, that's what you're buying. Katrina, in early November, spoke a little bit about this becomes. Those are, the old trucks are, they take two people to operate. These new ones are a single operator, which makes us more efficient. We can go out and do a higher volume of work.
So when it says purchase two grapple lightning loaders with hard ox body, we're talking about with truck?
I'll have Katrina explain.
That's correct. That includes the chassis and the trailer that comes with it. The current trucks that we use have a trailer that comes off of it. These trailers are attached, and they won't be removed from the truck.
There are, my question though is, are we also buying new trucks?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to because it's in essence one piece.
Right. All right. So they, it comes to us as one piece, fully assembled, sorry.
That's correct.
Right, they're not detachable, basically, without a lot of work, yeah.
And this is an improvement in operation in that it takes one person now, not two, to load up debris from the yards.
That's correct. We end up with two trailers on collection instead of one, so we can service more households with less people.
But the operator, there's not an operator up in a cab and an operator in the truck cab. There's just one operator, is that right?
That's correct.
Katrina, how many of these do we have already?
We have four.
Okay. Well, I just, sorry, hadn't seen it. So thank you for that.
Because it spends all its time over in Burke Place.
Okay. Well, I just, sorry, hadn't seen it. So thank you for that.
Suppose it spends all its time over in Burke Place getting up people's yard debris.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10B2 authorizes a contract with Schmidt Environmental Construction Incorporated for the miscellaneous pump station improvements project in the amount of $3,167,000.
May for approval.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Comments, questions?
Yes, this is pointed out to me by the city manager. This is on page 292 of the budget under capital improvement plan, sewer system improvements, sewer collection system projects. Is this 3.167 million specifically called out, or is it just lumped into that big broad category?
I do not have the document in front of me. I double-checked it last night, and I don't know if Allison can look. I believe it's specifically called out as a miscellaneous pump station improvements, but I'll have to check. Matt, do you know off the top of your head?
Yes, it is a called-out project in the capital improvement plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can we discuss in a little more detail what is meant by various electrical, mechanical, and structural improvements?
So that is in your memo, and we broadly described, and we talked about this, it'll be various electrical, mechanical, and structural improvements to a variety of pump stations that are listed in here, because each individual pump station has its own plan in the set of documents. And so individually, and Matt can walk through the assessment that was done to determine that, to put the specs together. So the reason we say various is you'd have to go through each pump station to say what we're doing. Matt?
Yeah, that's correct, Megan. Most of those lift stations are 20-plus years old, and so over time, just things wear out. Electrical panels, piping inside the station, some of them need new lighting, some of them don't have fencing. Fencing is needed from a security standpoint. A lot of things that are just bringing those stations up to our current standards, so, but it really varies. Each station was looked at individually to determine what was needed at those stations, and then we made kind of a list of improvements that was needed, and that's what was in the bid documents.
Okay. And as I understand it, this will upgrade seven of our 18 pump stations?
That's correct. We've got 18 stations in our system, with our oldest constructed in 1976. That's a Greystone Lift Station, which is off of Greystone Lane, off of Bent Creek Road. Our two newest stations were constructed last year in the North Gate subdivision and Men's Trail subdivision. But most of these, well, all of these are stations that are 20-plus years old.
You want? Okay. You have any other type of question? Thought? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10B3 authorizes the purchase of approximately 13-point acres of property located adjacent to Duck Sanford Park from the Spencer Family Exempt Trust in the amount of $4 million. This expenditure was not budgeted.
May for approval.
Second. All right, have a motion is second. Comments, questions?
Yes. And your reply to the council on this, you said there was 5.7 million in this unobligated accumulated fund balance. Is that before or after we take the $4 million out of it?
It's $5.7 million. I'm about to send you the year-end financials ending September 30, 2025. And so that money is, there's more than that in our ending balance, but that's spoken for, and I'll have Allison explain why. But the 5.7 million that I'm referring to here is, it's money we budgeted for employees that we did not spend. We had an average of 30 vacancies a month. And so while the money was budgeted, we did not spend that on personnel benefits, et cetera. We also had retirements, where when people retire, they're at a higher salary than the people that replace them typically. And so we ended up with this amount of money. We don't budget it in the budget moving forward or carry it forward because we don't know what that number's going to be until the fiscal year ends. So it's money that just goes back, it's not encumbered anywhere else. Other ending balance money, Allison can explain why we're not calculating that toward anything else.
Excuse me, you didn't answer my question. Is the 5.7 inclusive of the $4 million that we want to spend?
I'm getting to that. Okay?
Very simple, yes or no?
The simple answer is the 5.7 million, as I sent to you in an email today, is, that is the balance at the end of fiscal '25, period. You asked how much money was in the account? It's 5.7 million.
Okay.
Yeah, so the unobligated accumulated fund balance is just general funds fund balance. That's what it is. And so when we end, we talk about this during every budget process. It accumulates for various reasons. Our revenue may be higher than expected, our expenditures may be lower than expected. When we have something like personal services, that's one of those things that doesn't carry forward. So it's going to accumulate, and it's going to be in fund balance, and it's, we're going to move forward with it. And so when something like this comes up, kind of a very unexpected thing, a very large one, the city manager will come to me and say, can we afford this? And that's my role in that process, is if we do this, and it's $4 million, how are we going to pay for this? And that is not a yes or no answer. We have to look at a lot of things. Does it mean that we don't get to do something else? What does it mean? And so I'm looking at what our fund balance is right now. This just so happened to be right at the time we're looking at fiscal '25 and how it ended. And so I can very clearly say, if this is a priority for you, we can use the unspent personal services budget for that. That's where this kind of term comes from. It just means that fund balance is there. So the answer, can we afford this, is yes, but I don't answer that without doing a whole lot of analysis of where we are with fund balance. And so that's it. Other things, like savings in contractual services or commodities or things like that, those things are carried forward in encumbrances. We might not have spent it all in '25, but if it's encumbered, it gets carried forward, that's obligated. Those are things we have to pay for. This is just a portion of what we have left over that we did not spend, that will not, it has not been obligated to any specific purpose. So that's where the term comes from. It's general fund fund balance. It is not a special pot of funds that's sitting over here. It is in the general fund. It is part of that accumulated fund balance that we discuss every time we go through the budget process with you.
Where does it go if it's not spent?
It just accumulates. And so once you come to the next but formal budget process, we will be looking at that fund balance level and saying, oh, okay, you know, we finished the year better, we actually could obligate more funds. Then you have that opportunity to make changes to the budget of that process. This is just happening now, and so we can, we could use this now, if that's something that you choose to do.
Year-to-year, 5.7, is that about average, or is that high, is that low?
I would say from personal services, the, being under budget is typical in employee-related things. I mean, we have vacancies all the time, things change with salaries. That number is a little bit higher this year, but that is a function of the fact that salaries increase over, you know, from year to year, things happen there. And that's comprehensive. It's every department, you know, if you deal with a vacancy all year long. The way we budget positions is we budget them as if they would all be filled at any given point in time. We have to budget that way. That is, you know, not realistically the way it happens. And so that's kind of why we end up being at 92%, 91% of budget in personal services. That 5.7 million is about 8% of our total personal services budget, so that's not unusual.
She's saying the number grows year over year because personnel costs grow?
Yeah.
But the percentage is consistent with previous fiscal years. So ultimately, it's whether or not you want to spend these funds on this, something else, or you want us to leave them for the next budget cycle. You know, from a balance standpoint, telling you where the money can come from, that's ultimately up to you. For the opportunity to purchase the property, that's a different discussion if you want to get to that when you're ready.
I'm all for spending the money for this property. There's no doubt about it. I just wanted to know, so this will leave approximately 1.7 million in the unobligated accumulated fund balance after this?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the answer is it is after, okay, never mind, I'm good.
It's before, actually. So it's 5.7, the four, we would be using part of that. If you wanted to isolate it to this one specific thing in fund balance, we could say we would use four of it, and 1.7 would accumulate forward.
That's the question I was trying to get answered. Thank you. So this is, Mr. Crouch, this is an opportunity for us to purchase a piece of land next to current parks and rec infrastructure that we weren't expecting to be available to the city two years ago, but through circumstances, and it is now on the market, it is CDD by zoning, so it could be sold to a commercial development for sure, or whatever CDD allows. And the contemplation is that this will enhance our baseball offerings for our families and our children in this town, and it would function kind of hand in glove with, not to take a baseball analogy there, but it would function well with what's already there.
It would. It's a unique opportunity, and certainly, we talked about this in August during the budget process several times, that we thought this property might be available, we budgeted to actually do improvements on it, but we really didn't know at the time what the property value was, and, you know, kind of some nuances. It's very generous of the Spencer family to give us this opportunity. While, yes, we're paying $4 million for the property, there's a lot of suitors for the property. A lot of people would like to develop it, and we've been very focused on trying to get this. And I'll remind you, there's another piece that we need to acquire from the water board. They're amenable to that, but that's a transaction that needs to come later, where the old water tank used to be. I don't, we don't get these opportunities. One of the last ones in the middle of town was Town Creek Park, where we were able to acquire that. And you could laugh that Duck Sanford's not in the middle of town from a north-south perspective. It pretty much is. And this really squares up youth baseball and puts older kids in parts of Duck Sanford Park and lets us at Richland Park, as we move forward, that capital project, take care of kids in certain age ranges. I think Keith, you said 13U is...
Yes, ma'am. The intention for proposed use of this property would be to continue to build 60, what we call 60-90 fields, or 60-foot mounds, 90-foot base paths, as you're 13U over baseball, which is what is immediately adjacent to this location anyway. So you keep that sized field in the same location geographically, and gives us then the opportunity to focus on the 225-foot fence fields at Richland Park as we're master planning that.
Any questions or thoughts?
How will we handle the .65 acres with the water board?
The water board's already aware that will be paid for out of the same fund likely, if you guys agree, and that, like I said, that transaction will happen next calendar year, but it would be, it's, in essence, it's $290,000 an acre, it's less than an acre, so multiply that times .65, and that's what we'll be paying. And that is normal. I think a lot of people don't know that transactions between the water board and the city, that it's not uncommon that one buys property from the other and they go back and forth at fair market value.
Can we speak to something Mr. Haley brought up about using some of these funds towards downtown projects, maybe traffic issues or sewer issues that we've discussed in the moratorium discussion last week? Kind of what could be done with this amount of money, if even enough to do a project of any size down there?
Yeah, sewer things typically are going to run out of the sewer enterprise fund and wouldn't be commingled with this, Allison. So if you're talking about right-of-way acquisition or other things, the ability to use it in the downtown area, valuation of property is high. We would have to move forward and assess what the most important priority for right-of-way is, and this likely wouldn't cover much of an acquisition in the downtown area. A lot of these, we have to have property owner willingness, or we have to go to condemnation proceedings, we have to do a lot of appraisals and other things that have yet to be done. So I couldn't unequivocally tell you what it would impact, but at the price per acre in the urban core and in urban neighborhood west, depending on location, is very high from a value standpoint. And some of the right-of-way acquisitions that would be needed will take out structures or parts of structures and would be very complicated. Not that they can't be done, they're just very time-consuming and complicated, and depends on your lens and working with property owners versus condemnation.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
You won't be surprised to hear that. I'm very excited about this. I think it's an opportunity we can't bypass to have this kind of property next to additional parks and rec is, gives us really an opportunity to build something unique and special there, and it really helps us check a box for our older kids who are playing ball in this town. Again, it's a unique opportunity to have a piece of property right there next to the other fields.
I think this is a giving back. The city took away my ball fields, which we're sitting on right now, and finally we're